Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting, Monday, February 12, 2018. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open, adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 9, 2018, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Trittown News. Second, on January 9, 2018, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on January 9, 2018, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the fire prevention code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77.
We need a roll call.
Yes, you may. Mr. Armata.
Present.
Mr. Mertens.
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mr. Posh.
Here.
Mr. San Clemente.
Here.
Mr. Turk, I have not heard from. Mr. Orozco.
Here.
Mr. Moretti.
Here.
And Chairman Nansen.
Here.
You have a call.
We all stand for the pleasure of the meeting. To the flag of the United States of America and to the repugnant which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Mr. Dr. Testimony, give this thing to the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so we can go. The reference should reflect this being Mr. Mallon and Mr. Howard have all been sworn for the evening.
Thank you, sir. Approval of minutes.
Can you hear me now?
That's better.
Approval of minutes. Regular meeting, December 18, 2017. Eligible voters: Armata, Martin, O'Donnell, Posh, San Clemente, Turk, Nansen. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. San Clemente.
Second.
Second by Mr.?
Armata.
Armata? Okay.
Got it.
I knew it'd come from there. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Armata.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente.
Yes.
Chairman Nansen.
Yes.
Minutes are approved, thank you.
Thank you. Reorganization and regular meeting, January 8, 2018. Eligible voters: Armata, Martin, O'Donnell, Posh, San Clemente, Orozco, Moretti?
Moretti.
And Nansen.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell.
Second.
Second by Mr. Armata. Roll call, please.
Mr. Armata.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente.
Yes.
Mr. Orozco.
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen.
Yes. Regular meeting, January 22, 2018. Eligible voters: Armata, Martin, O'Donnell, Posh, San Clemente, Turk, Orozco, Nansen.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell.
Second.
Second by Mr. Armata. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Armata.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente.
Yes.
Mr. Orozco.
Yes.
Chairman Nansen.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any vouchers?
No vouchers.
Correspondence?
The only correspondence I have is what was already sent to the members and a letter from Mr. Hirsch, who is the attorney for Sea Free Plaza, which is on tonight's agenda. They had a problem with their notice, so they asked that we please carry this or reschedule it to March the 12th, which is not a problem. So, he will be re-noticing.
Okay. Anyone in the audience for case number BA-17-15, Sea Free Plaza LLC? See you none. This case will be carried to March 12, 2018, 7:30 PM with no further notice, and we do have?
No, it will have notice, they have to re-notice.
They will notice, okay. And extension of time? Did they give an extension of time?
No, they're good through the end of April.
Okay. Resolutions. Case number BA-0806 SD-2, AAM Mills LLC. Resolution granting preliminary and final major technical subdivision approval with ancillary bulk variance approval. Eligible voters: Armata, Martin, O'Donnell, Posh, San Clemente, Orozco, and Nansen.
Motion to approve, Mr. Nansen.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell. Seconded by Mr. Armata. Can we have a roll call?
Yes, and just before we do, Mr. Mallon had one comment on that resolution, and it was corrected, so it had to do with putting a building name in the resolution, so I sent that to everybody this morning.
Okay.
It was just to designate, he didn't have a building, we've always had the letters on the building, one of the buildings F had to be labeled, he had the right lot just to, so we know it's building F.
Okay.
That was the only addition.
Great. Mr. Armata?
Hang on. Mr. O'Donnell, can you amend your?
Oh.
Motion, please?
Um, motion amended to include the name of the building in the resolution.
Second on the amendment.
Thank you.
Okay. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Armata.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente.
Yes.
Mr. Orozco.
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen.
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized.
Okay, moving right ahead. Applications before the board. Case number BA-07-05A, Woolies Fish Market, Inc., minor site plan, sign variance, and patio enclosure. Applicant of Woolies Fish Market, Inc. as applicant and John D. Woolley, his owner, seeking a minor site plan approval in sign variance to remove two existing freestanding signs and replace them with a new digital sign on the southernmost portion of the property and enclosed the patio on the premises known as Block 140, Lot 5.01, 655 US Highway 9. Expiration date, May 29, 2018. Mr. Alfieri.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Salvatore Alfieri, Cleary Giacobi Alfieri, and Jacobs, on behalf of the applicant.
Mr. Alfieri, you have witnesses?
Yes, just Mr. Woolley.
Okay, you want to go ahead and swear amen?
If I raise your hand, please, just for the testimony you give this evening, it'll be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so we can go.
I do.
Does anybody have your full name, please?
John D. Woolley.
Thank you.
Mr. Woolley, how long have you owned and operated the businesses located at this property?
You can sit.
Sit, John. This is my 40th year owning the business. And over the years, you've expanded it to, it started, I believe, it's just the fish market, and you had the produce stand, and then it became that plus a restaurant, is that correct? That's correct. And tonight, you're, I'll strike that, you currently have freestanding signs located on the Route 9 frontage of the property. Can you describe for the board the two existing signs that exist? There are wood frame signs, approximately four by eight inserts with changeable letters. Both are quite similar. Then there's additional hour signs put underneath one and a blackboard sign under the other. And tonight, you're proposing to remove those two signs and replace them with one digital sign, is that correct? That's correct. That, the location of that digital sign would be at the same location as the freestanding sign at the southernmost property line? Yes, that's correct. And that's adjacent to the vacant gas station? Yes. Can you describe for the board how the LED or digital sign would work? It's a, it's a sign that is 19 megapixel in clarity, and it has a changeable program. You can load in as many as eight different messages, and they would, they would change out at eight sec, as quick, as slow as eight seconds per panel. I mean, as fast as eight seconds per panel, or you could change them just two, twice a minute, or whatever interval you'd like. You had a chance to review Mr. Howard's email where he wanted, assuming the board were to grant your approval, to have restrictions similar to other signs that were approved in town, and the three restrictions that he suggested was no scrolling text. Do you agree that this sign would not have scrolling text? I would, yes. Second would be no electronic animation, you would agree to that as well? Yes. And thirdly, you cannot change the message faster than every five seconds. You indicated that the fastest this could change is eight seconds. That's correct. So you would comply with that? Yes. Okay. Second, the second area of relief that you're seeking from the board is to enclose the patio at the rear of the building. Can you describe for the board what that patio currently looks, that looks like and what it's used for? Currently, it's a 30 by 40 area, roughly a 25 by 30 area. It has canvas sides that roll down to protect the, from wind and from rain. They get kind of weathered, so we'd like to enclose that, so we have a little more comfort for our dining customers and a bit longer season. And how would you enclose it? With sliding glass doors or windows around all three sides and have emergency exits on each end. Now, that area, when the weather allows it, is, already serves your restaurant use, is that correct? Yes. So you're, in theory, you're not going to be increasing the seating if you enclose that area? No, it's going to be the same. Now, will this be designed for all weather? Yes. So you could use it all year? Yes. And presently, you can only use it when the weather allows? That's correct. Will you be increasing the number of employees or your hours of operation if this approval were granted? No. Would you increase, would you be increasing the traffic volume in terms of deliveries for your business? No, that should all stay the same. What is the total number of seats that currently exist in the restaurant, and will that change? I believe it's 65, and that shouldn't change at all. And there's a deck that, above the proposed enclosure, will that deck have any purpose other than serve as a roof? No, that'll stay the same. But you're not going to use the second? No, there's no service up there.
It's really just a roof, it's not really a deck.
Beg your pardon?
It's really just a roof, not a deck.
It's a fiberglass flat top deck.
But it's a roof. Are you going to be on top of it?
Yes.
And then that's a deck, so that's a little different. Different than what you just said.
Okay. It's a, yes, it's a flat fiberglass deck.
So what are you going to use it for?
It currently exists, it gives us access to our storage and office upstairs. So you, they will not serve the restaurant for seating? No. And when you say it currently exists, what's, what's the structure currently made of that, that deck area? They're two by eight joists with fiberglass plywood and then fiberglass above that. So nothing would, there'll be no storage of any kind on the deck? You just use it? Nothing stored on the deck, it's stored inside the, the area, the second floor of the restaurant. So it only provides access to the second floor? Yes. And it currently serves that same purpose? Yes.
So would you be willing to stipulate to a condition that at no point would that roof be utilized for anything other than access to the second floor?
Yes. And, Mr. Chair, that's all the testimony we have.
Okay. Mr. Mallon?
Yeah. First of all, what type of colors are you going to have on the sign? We try to stay away from combination of the red and blues, because that's what a lot of the police use. I mean, if it's red and just solid red, it's usually fine. Have you discussed what the letter, what the?
The company I'm working with is Watchfire, and they, they spec out a red, green, blue combination, because that gives you the most combinations of colors for your, for your um?
But if it's not going to be flashing, then you, it's okay. And now, when you look at your sign, the top part's going to be solid all the time, the woolies?
Yes.
That will stay, and then it's where you have the, in your example, the tuna 14 pound grouper and sea bass? That's what's going to change?
Yes.
And your hours would stay, correct?
That'll be a permanent sign, yes. That'd be permanently that.
All right. So actually, you're looking for a variance for the sign, because you're going to have two, really, you're going to have this and the one on the building? And your, your sign's not going to comply, because it's not going to comply with the setback. You need 20, it's going to be 12, and you're going to be four foot off the southerly property line, and you also need 20, correct?
That's correct.
And your clearance is one and a half feet, where seven is normal, but would you say the location of the sign will not infringe on any site triangle coming out of the driveway there?
That's correct.
So that, that would be one reason. Um, let's see what else I have. A lot of the other things were granted prior. The only, the only thing is, you asked for a waiver for, for the fire and for the utility fees, and we can't do that. Only by the ordinance, only the governing body can waive the fee, so whatever the fire application fee and the utility application fee is, you're going to have to pay, we can't, we can't waive that stuff.
Understood.
All right? And you've also asked for a waiver of the zoning table and, and the key map, things like that, which, most of the stuff is architectural, except for the sign, otherwise, there wouldn't be any site changes. Okay? And then you'll have, on your, on the roof that you have now, you're going to put, you're going to put little sopits or extending out to catch the water, you're going to have downspouts and then discharge them into the, the property?
There's, yeah, those downspouts will, will be right, right connected with the recharge trench that already exists with bubblers on each end.
Okay, okay. No further questions, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Bean?
Sal, I would just like to get a plan showing the location of the sign, because like right now, you have an ASBIL, but it doesn't show where the proposed sign is going, it shows the existing sign over the property line, actually. So that sign that's over the property line is being removed, correct?
Yes.
So if I could just, you know, I just think it's important to, for the file to be complete, that the location of the new sign be shown. All I have is an ASBIL survey that doesn't, I mean, obviously, it's not there, so it's not on an ASBIL. We would just need to see where it's going to be located, have a dimension, so that the file is complete.
Well, we're replacing the southernmost sign, so it's going to be right on top.
I understand that, but the plan I have doesn't show any sign on the southern area.
Right.
It just shows a tree and something else, which I'm not sure what that is.
There's a sign right in that little box.
Yes, that's where the, the new sign goes, right there.
And it's the same dimensions?
Exact same spot.
The dimensions are different, though?
Yeah, it's not going to, that particular sign has landscape ties around it, the new sign will not have that. Would you be willing to provide the board, the town with an ASBIL plan once the sign's installed, so that it's documented? Is that okay?
Yeah, and I'd like to see something on the base of the sign, like some landscaping or something, so it's not just two four by fours coming out of the ground.
Gotcha. We'll work with, I guess, Harry on that? Is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, some more thing, I mean, the plan we have is the final ASBIL survey, I think that's what the members have?
Yes.
I, I think you should denote on there, there's the one sign to be removed and the other sign to be replaced, and give the dimensions. Four foot off the southerly property line and 12 foot setback, so it's in there.
Okay.
Then we're locked in. Not that Mr. Woolley wouldn't do what he says he'll do, but if somebody picks it up later, it's on the plan.
That's fine.
Any other question?
No.
Any questions from the board?
I just have the, in the enclosed area that you're going to enclose, are you going to have heat and air conditioning there?
Yes, it's what they call a mini-split system. It's just a basic discharge head on the inside of the wall and a, and a remote condenser.
Okay, thank you.
No ductwork, just one, one item.
I just have a question. Are you getting rid of the old truck, or are you going to keep the old truck?
The old truck is at the body shop right now, somebody ran into it.
Oh, no.
So it will come back, but I don't know if it's going to be out there. I gotta put it away, I think.
Oh, you're going to put it away, okay. Any other questions of the board? See you none? Professionals?
No.
Can I have a motion to open the public?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Mertens, seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? See you none? At this time, we'll take questions and comments from the public on Woolies Fish Market. See you none? Can I have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Armata. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
That's all we have, Mr. Chair, we request a favorable vote on, on both, both items that we leave.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on this. I've been a patron of this place for many years, it's well taken care of, it's a nice operation, I've eaten in the restaurant also, and I don't see any trouble with approving this at all, so my motion is to approve.
It's a good operation.
Yeah, I'm going to second that motion. The sign's going to modernize the location, and it'll definitely be easier to read, what sales you have, and what else is going on at the restaurant, so I make a motion. Excuse me, I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Armata.
Yes, and I think it's a good idea to get rid of that canvas and close that, so your customers are enjoying the place more. The sign is a good idea, too.
Thank you.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Chairman Nansen?
With the findings of facts, the sign will be given to us on an ASBIL, size, dimension, and also labeled the removal of the signs. My vote, yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alfieri. Okay. I'm going to go ahead and read this one in. Okay, case number BA-14-09A, Bennett Road Associates, amended preliminary and final major site plan and use variance. Application of Bennett Road Associates as applicant, owner seeking amended preliminary final major site plan and use variance approval to expand the non-conforming use by constructing a 20 by 8 catalyst storage container to rise, rosin tanks, 8 by 10, and a chiller 8 by 8 on premises known as Lot 168, Lot 26, 210 Bennett Road. Expiration date, May 8, 2018. Mr. Alfieri?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, again, members of the board, Salvatore Alfieri, on behalf of the applicant. This, as the board may recall, several years ago, the board granted the applicant use variance approval to convert an already used industrial property to the, the limited use that this applicant puts it, puts it to, and they do liners for sewers for municipalities and others. Since that time, there's a, there's a portion of their business that has been done by a third-party contractor that they want to bring on-site, very limited use, very limited addition to the site, and we'll give you details momentarily. There was, if the board, for those board members who were here when this was originally approved, the next-door neighbor, Mr. Perry, you want me to, he sent the letter, you want me to address that letter, Mr. Chair?
Why don't we do that during the public portion?
That's fine.
Do you have any witnesses?
We have two witnesses.
You want to go ahead and swear them in?
Brian, you want to swear them both in?
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I raise your hand, please, to swear the testimony, give the scene, and it be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so we can go.
I do.
Brian Murphy, M-U-R-P-H-Y.
Mike Dello, from North American Pipeline Service. Mike Dello.
Can you just spell the last name, please?
Dezen David, E-L-L-L.
Thank you.
All right, Brian, we'll start with you. You, you are a licensed engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey, is that correct?
That is correct.
And you were qualified at the original application to serve in both capacities, is that also correct?
Yes.
And you sat last time, too?
Yes, I did. That's good.
So, and, Mr. Chair, we just request that his credentials be accepted.
We accept his credentials.
All right. Do you have an exhibit that you're going to mark before you begin your testimony?
Sure. I have two. One is page 101, the amended site plan that was submitted, it's just a color rendering of that.
AA?
Yes.
And the other one is colored photos of the catalyst containers, the resin tanks, and the chiller.
What is that marked?
A9.
A9.
All right, Mr. Murphy, referring to AA8, will you, will you explain for the board what the, how the property's currently developed?
Sure. Currently, there's a single access off of Bennett Road. It's a long driveway, the building is about 600 feet off the road. During the last approval, we, we installed Evergreens basically along the entire frontage back by the building, so essentially, you really can't even see the building or much of what's going on back there from the roadway. The roadway was improved at the entrance as required for, basically, provide curbing. The building was an existing building, it was in very bad shape, they've since fixed it up considerably, they're still, still working on it, it's work in progress. Were approved, basically, for 17 employees total, and the operation was basically, it's, they do pipe cleaning, pipe lining, T, pipe TV, cameras, you know, general maintenance of pipes throughout, basically, the state and the surrounding states. As part of that liner work, they had an outside company, basically, providing the lining material that went in. That company's going kaput, and basically, they're looking to buy that company and consolidate the operations to continue operating out of one location. So that's really what we're here for tonight. It's really kind of, and where we're proposing is along the north side of the building, behind behind the building, is where we would put the, the items we're gonna discuss. Eighty-nine are the actual photos of what they look like. So the rosin tanks, basically, they look like 8-by-10 sheds, essentially. So there's protective shed around, around the tank, tanks. The catalyst is also a metal container. It has a man door that goes in. The skid-bounded chillers, they're basically like an outdoor HVAC unit would also come in. And essentially, the rosin tanks, they're provided in a dike container made of concrete. The volume of that is equal to or exceeds the volume of the tanks. So if there's a leak, it's completely encased within the, the dike system. Also, this is very regulated by DEP, and DEP permits are required for the resin. And we've obtained those and are ready to move forward with that operation. So basically, these would basically just be brought in and basically put into place. The dike would be constructed for the tanks. And that's really the limit of what we're proposing, you know, to be installed on-site. And just go a little bit into how it functions. The liner comes in, it's essentially like a long felt noodle. It's flat. The resin is injected into it, it's folded over and put onto a refrigerated truck and kept at a constant temperature. It's very temperature-sensitive, so it has to be temperature-regulated. And then basically, it's shipped out to the site and used wherever it may go throughout the state or the surrounding states out to the sites and installed in place.
Right. The, the refrigerating unit, does that, is that for the catalyst?
No, it's actually for the resin.
For the resin?
The resin has to be kept at a, at a particular temperature.
Is there any type of backup generator for that in case loss of power?
No.
Brian, what, we're also proposing a slight modification to, for gravel parking in the location. Could you show the board where that is?
Sure. Back to AA. To the west of the building is where we're proposing that the parking, it's already being utilized. So basically, the gravel area that, that exists now, basically, we're gonna propose to use that for parking, for additional parking. We have the parking along the front, which is utilized, the handicap park stall and everything is in that location. So really, it's just the addition of, of the additional spots along the west side of the property.
And that's existing gravel now?
Existing gravel now.
So you're really just showing it on the board?
Just showing where it would be.
It's gonna be delineated?
No, no.
And, and Brian, the, you've, you recently visited the site, is that correct?
Yes, I have.
Have you confirmed that all of the conditions from the prior approval have been met?
Yes.
Other than interior renovations, which are unrelated?
Correct.
The, the, other than the, the three structures that are proposed to be located outside, all the activity relating to this, this resin and this liner is gonna be done within the existing building?
That is correct.
So then, there's no other improvements proposed for the site?
No.
And then, simply from, we're gonna bring Mr. Dello up, who'll give you a little more detail on the operation. But from a planning point of view, you, you provided testimony to justify the use variance last time. Is that testimony going to be the same, that this is just an extension of the previously-approved use?
Exactly. It's essentially the same, it's still the same use. Basically, it's, it's a continuation of the same use. Just rather than having that the liner material being created off-site, it's, it's gonna be on-site. So that, that's the only difference. Other than that, it's the exact same operation, providing the exact same services.
So...
And the reasons for the variance is the same.
So, Mr. Murphy, in your opinion, so the statutory criteria for a D2 variance expansion of a non-conforming use is whether or not the site can accommodate the use.
Sure.
So is it your testimony that, given the current operations of the site, the location of where this proposed expansion is being proposed, you know, behind the building, that it's your opinion that the site can accommodate this increase?
Easily, yes.
Does the increase increase employees?
Yes. There'll be an increase of three employees with this operation. So they're, they've also gotten busier, so we're looking at a total of 31 total employees. That's why we have the additional parking to the west side of the property.
But all but three would have been required whether this comes or not?
That's correct.
So focusing on this issue, so the increase in the operation requires three additional employees. There's adequate area on the site to accommodate their vehicles and this operation?
Easily, yes.
With no negative impact to the surrounding land uses?
That is correct.
And since this was already approved as a use variance, is it your opinion that this increase does not negatively impact the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance?
That is correct.
Thank you.
One follow-up question. Thank you, Chair. Good job. One other question I neglected to ask Mr. Murphy, and only because the neighbor, Mr. Mastrola, requests it in a letter that we'll talk about later. But will any additional site lighting be proposed for this use?
No, there'll be no, no other improvements are proposed, other than basically the installation of, of the resin tanks and the catalyst and the chiller.
Thank you.
And just before you finish up, there's a modest increase...
That is correct.
...as required as a result of this.
That is correct.
.05 percent.
That's correct.
Can you quantify that, can you just break it for me?
Sure. It's, basically, we have 18 by 8, 28 by 10, and 18 by 20. That's...
What was the first one?
Yeah, 48.
So like, less than 400 square feet?
Yeah.
Yeah, 384, yeah. Less than 400 is the total square feet of additional impervious. And that's the minimum compared to the rest, as we indicated. It's a, it's an increase of impervious of .05 percent.
On 17 acres?
Yeah, on the 17-acre tract of land. So it's, it's very diminished. Essentially, the addition of a few sheds that have been comparison to the size. And again, I, I feel no, there, there's no negative impact of providing this.
You good?
I'm good.
Mr. Mallon?
All right. Well, first of all, as the previous application, we can't waive fees. So you have to pay the fire and utility. Usually, the utility is an application, it's a minimum. And they'll come back and tell you a letter of no interest, but you do have to pay those. We can't waive them. Will, will this increase any noise?
No.
No?
Basically, all the sounds inside, the injections inside, so it's, it's, it's an air conditioner. That's, that's, that's the amount of increased noise.
The, and the deliveries, they come there in a day, and is there a modest increase in traffic?
Yeah, basically, it's, it's, I think, one a month.
It's gotta be one a month.
Yeah, so, so one, one a month of the, of the material.
Okay. And do these have self-containment systems in case of spills?
For the resin, yes.
For the resin does?
As a containment dike, that's equal to the volume of the tanks.
All right. And question whether you need, because you have a lot of operations and trucks moving on-site, whether bollards should be placed in front of these, so nobody runs into them?
Yeah, it's probably not a bad idea.
So you'll add bollards?
Yes.
And you'll provide a detail with that, Brian?
Absolutely.
And you really don't propose any landscaping, because actually, nobody can see it.
That's correct.
And, and if I remember from the original application, as you're looking in at the building on the right side, there was plantings that had to be put in there to screen the operations. As far as I know, that's in, so that whatever you do is still screened?
That's correct. Basically, along the frontage, looking into the site, down the driveway, there's Evergreens on both sides, double row. And running basically east to west, along that south and the end, along our neighbors, we planted Evergreens as well during the last application. Essentially, the site's enclosed.
And that was the resident that appeared last time and was very concerned? And I think he's the same resident that has written the letter that we've talked about, that he said he really praised the applicant and how he's improved the site?
That is correct. The one benefit we have tonight is, we have, we have an existing site, an existing user. We know how they work, how they function, how they treat their, their surrounding area. They're just basically looking to, you know, consolidate their use. So you know what they expect. You expect what, what's been occurring on the site.
And I have nothing further. Mr. Bean took care of a lot of the stuff I had also.
Yeah.
We both look at it the same way. So I have no further questions.
The other, only other comment was the Monmouth County Board of Health. Their letter said, "Since liquid resin will be stored on the property, which is flammable, we recommend approval from HAO Fire Bureau."
That's fine, we'll, we'll seek that. I didn't see a letter from them, but we'll make sure we...
Brian, do you have the letter?
From fire?
Yeah.
No.
I have the internal copy, so thanks. I also have an environmental commissioner, did you see that?
Yeah, that I do have.
We'll, we'll respond to the fire official and make sure that we get a sign off.
Now, the catalyst, what, what is the catalyst used for?
I'll let, uh...
Okay.
I won't even attempt.
Is there any question that this witness brought aboard?
No, I have one. Will you have signs on the storage tanks identifying that this is, so if anybody coming up, the fire department...
John, your mic's not on. Your mic's not on.
Here's your mic. Get closer.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Will you have signage on the storage tank to identify that there is resin stored in those things?
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay, fine. Any other questions from the board? Mr. O'Ferry?
Okay, Mr. Dello, please, thanks, Brian. Mr. Dello, would you tell the board what your position is with the company?
I'm the general manager of the sewer division for North American Pipeline Services.
And for those board members who weren't here at the last, when this was originally approved, can you generally describe what the nature of this business is?
The nature of the business is sewer rehabilitation and sewer cleaning and sewer video inspection.
And all of that sewer activity is done off-site?
Correct.
The new use that you're introducing is called a wet-out, is that the term?
It's called a wet-out facility.
And what, can you describe for the board what that is?
It's a facility where we get material delivered on-site. The material is consisted of the liner material, which looks like the, the material that's on your, your feet for a sock. We call it a sock. That's one thing, that's the felt material. And the other material is the resin that gets delivered. And it's a two-part system. We take the catalyst and the resin, they get mixed. Once they get mixed into the felt material, it gets put on a truck and then delivered to the job site for installation.
And all of that activity is contained within the, either these structures or the building itself?
Correct.
Nothing outside?
Nothing outside.
And you, Mr. Murphy indicated that they have to be temperature-controlled. Is there a truck that's temperature-controlled?
Yes.
And is that your truck or a third-party?
It's our truck.
And then you, how frequently would that truck visit, come and go from the site?
Approximately once a week.
And is that an additional traffic from what currently occurs on-site?
Correct.
And then, we also heard, heard a question about material delivery. How frequently would this material be delivered to the site?
Approximately once a month.
So you'll have once a week extra truck, and then once a month, an extra truck?
Once a week, that truck goes out to the crew that's doing the installation out in the field. And the once a month is the material we deliver on-site.
Other than that increase in, in traffic volume, is there any additional traffic generated from this use?
No.
Number of employees? You heard Mr. Murphy indicate that there'll be three additional employees. What are the roles of those three employees?
They will be working inside the wet-out facility.
And hours of operation, would, would that change as a result of this additional use?
No, it'd be, remain the same, 7 to 5, 7:00 AM to 5:00 in the afternoon.
Will this product be used by any companies other than your company?
No.
So you don't sell it to third-parties?
Negative. Just to answer your question, Wendell, when the catalyst gets mixed with the resin, it has to be refrigerated.
Okay.
At that point.
My, my question is, now, since brought that up, this is all being mixed inside?
Correct.
How does the rosin and the catalyst get to the inside of the building?
It's, it's pumped in, there's a pump inside the building that draws and feeds the material from the tanks outside.
Okay, so the catalyst will be carried in, or is that through piping, too?
The catalyst will be carried in from the outside storage facility and put into a pump that's inside the building.
Do we have any piping? How, the... Mr. Mallon? Does that, does that need to be deplicted on the plans?
The piping, it wouldn't hurt, it's gonna go through. They, they do show on their plan where the, where the containment area is. I, I don't know if it's that important to do piping. It's above grade, above ground?
Yes, it is. But you're, you're correct, there will be a pipe.
Okay, and it will be above ground?
It will be above ground.
Will it be overhead, or even?
Below grade, you know, right around foot level.
Okay. Is there any protective, you know, bollards or anything that protects that from somebody hitting it, or?
We've agreed to install bollards.
Yeah, but that's bollards around the tanks, but what about the piping?
The piping, it'll be hard to see it, because the containment center will be close to the building. And the pipe will go from the, from the bottom of the tank right into the building. So it almost will be contained with the containment area.
Will there be any type of encapsulation on the piping? You know, containment in case it breaks or leaks?
Yes.
There will be?
Yeah, it's inside the containment area.
Yes. It'll be from the containment center, right inside the building.
Is there any hazardous, the catalyst, is that a hazardous material?
Yes.
When moving it from there to the inside, can you kind of explain the procedure?
The catalyst?
Yes.
The individual who's working in the wet-out facility could walk outside to the chemicals, the storage building and can pick up a, a box of it and hand-walk it inside the wet-out facility.
Okay, so it's in, it's in a concealed container?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
Whenever it's opened up, it's, it's got fiber, correct?
Well, it's, it's a liquid form, so it's, it's...
Oh, the catalyst is liquid?
It's in a, yes, it's in a liquid form, it's contained. And there's actually a little containment area inside the building, in case it does spill, that it's, will be contained.
Speaking of that containment area, I think, I'm not talking so much about what's in the building, but there's a detail that shows a 25-by-28 containment structure. 25-foot by 28-foot concrete spill containment structure that I don't see on the plan.
I believe you're talking...
Bring that up.
I don't, it's not on these pictures. But this, this is a resin tank. This tank will be storing the resin. And this tank will be inside a concrete, square rectangular structure.
So can you just show it on the plan, Brian, please?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Big enough so it holds...
Yeah, I just, it was, it was on like the details that got submitted, but it didn't make its way onto the plan. So it would just be helpful if it was shown on the plan, that's all.
Okay.
Mr. O'Donnell?
A question. You're installing 28-by-10 resin containers, right? And this resin is flammable?
Yes.
And how do you put it out if it catches on fire?
With water.
Water does the trick, you don't need chemicals?
Yes, no.
And both tanks are gonna be inside the concrete building?
Correct.
And what, do you have like a sprinkler system in it that puts it out?
Not outside, no.
Well, how would you do it? I mean, do you have a fire hydrant?
Oh, yes.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
Is this the resin, does it give off an odor?
It gives off a slight, sweet, glue-like odor. It's, it's kind of hard to smell it, though.
So that odor will be contained in the, in the shed?
Yes.
So it won't be letting it?
No.
Okay, how about the catalyst?
No odor whatsoever.
Is the catalyst, that's flammable also?
Yes.
What about explosive? It's just, somebody hits it, or they hit the tank, anything like that?
No. It's a non-explosive type of material.
Okay.
It's similar to fiberglass, correct?
The final product, yes. When you mix the catalyst and the resin in, it becomes, it becomes almost like fiberglass, yes.
And what about, you said it has to be at a certain temperature? What is that temperature?
Once the catalyst and the resin is mixed, it should be maintained below, somewhere around freezing, around 32 degrees.
So if the, so you have some type of air conditioning, if that goes out, now it goes above 32 degrees, what happens?
We'll simply lose the product. It'll, it'll solidify, because it likes heat.
Okay.
The only reason why it's put into a refrigerated truck is to retard the process of it actually going from a liquid state into a solid state, into fiberglass.
So it stays liquid at that 32 degrees?
Right.
And then, when it gets to the site, it's put out, and then it gets hardened?
Correct.
Okay.
And this material you insert, it's like a sleeve inside of an existing pipe, is that correct?
Correct. And, you know, picture a balloon that you blow up, you can make a little figure out of it. And that's what the felt material was. The resin is put into the skin of the balloon, it's put onto a truck, refrigerated to retard the process of it, you know, reacting. It's taken out to the job site, it's all trenchless. We open up a manhole after the sewer is cleaned and video-inspected. We take the balloon and we fill it with water. And it stretches, stretches from one manhole, the upstream manhole, to the downstream manhole. Then, once the balloon is filled... once the balloon is filled with water, we heat the water with the mobile boiler that we have on-site. And after the, the heat starts to take place, it hits the, the resin, catalyzed material, and it starts to transform from a liquid state into a solid state. And the host pipe acts like a mold for this new pipe. And over a period of about eight hours, it becomes hard, becomes a new pipe, just like, uh, you know, fiberglass. We cut off the downstream end, you know, where your toes are in the socket, releases the water. And you have a new pipe and a, and an old pipe. And it'll last another 30 years. The benefit is that it's, you know, it's trenchless. You don't have to dig up the road, do the inconvenience to the businesses, and it's a, it's a pretty neat process.
How long a section can you do at one time?
Um, we could probably do 1,000 feet.
Wow.
What do you do with laterals?
We have, before the liner is put into the sewer, we do the cleaning and the video inspection. And when the video inspection is performed, the camera actually notes where every lateral is. And the TV operator, after the liner is dewatered, you know, it's hard, we send a little robot into the sewer, and it knows where to go based on its program. There's a lateral at 2:00, 130 feet. There's another lateral at 150 feet at 7:00. And it drills a little hole and opens up the, opens up the lateral. And then we have to do a post-video inspection and prove to the owner that, you know, all the services have been opened up and everybody's flowing.
When you open that up, is that opening smooth, so you don't wind up with the affluent getting clogged on it?
It is. It is. We have a rotary bit on the machine that's, that smoothes out the edges.
Oh, okay.
So no toilet paper gets stuck or anything, you know?
Well, they come a long way from slip lining, huh?
They did. They did. Believe it or not, it was a process invented over 40 years ago, but it's just, you know, it's, it's taken its hold in the United States, so.
Any other questions from the board? Professionals? Okay. We have a motion to open to public.
So moved.
It's moved by Mr. San Clemente.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Anyone in the audience want to come forward and make a comment or statement or question of the applicant? Please come forward. And also, at this time, we can address Mr. Perry's letter.
Fine. Um, Perry Mastrola, who lives next door, he, if the board remembers, he showed up and actually objected to the application. He was concerned, I guess, more than an objection. But he wrote, and I'm not gonna read it verbatim, I believe the board has it, but he wrote that he's in favor of the application. He did say that as long as the variance is specific and narrow for this use, and not as, is not expandable to other industrial product or production, and, and we are limited only to this use as an additional component of our business. So we're not looking for anything other than that. He did ask about the lighting. We're not putting any new lighting in. And he says, I'm in favor of the application. He does compliment Mr. Mullin, who, who runs the business, that he's done everything he said he was going to do at the public hearing. And they really did clean up the site. They ran a really clean operation. And if you want more information from the letter, I can read it, or you can, you can read it.
But he did ask about a four-season screening?
Yeah, now, that's, it, buffering is already there. I, I think he's talking about buffering, putting screening right next to the, the sheds. You really, if you see from the green on the plans, you really can't see anything. And they're, they're really just sheds. They're not, they're not building a building.
He said, "If needed, on the east side of the tanks."
Right. Which is this?
Yeah, I don't think it's needed.
I, I would respectfully submit that the site is heavily screened, and I don't think that there's a need for any additional landscaping at all.
Okay, this is what he was asking.
Yeah, no, I hear it.
Okay.
And that's all we have, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Anyone from the public? Seeing none? Can I have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell? Seconded by Mr. Roscoe.
I have one other question, and this has, it's an ancillary question. What is the condition, in your mind, of the Howell sores?
I don't think I should answer that question. I haven't seen a lot of it, but I think it's in pretty good condition, what I've seen. It's in fairly good condition.
Thank you.
Fairly new.
You keep it...
Howell is fairly new.
You keep it clean. I mean, that's the process of trying to keep a good sewer system or collection system. Clean it, do a video inspection of it, you know? It's, it's good.
Thank you for the update.
No problem.
Mr. O'Fury, you have a closing statement?
No, just again, a clean operation, very minimal addition to it, and we request a favorable ruling.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to make a motion. I remember this case way back when it was the Trust place, and how you guys cleaned it up really nice and did everything that we asked you to do. And I agree with Jennifer that you don't need any buffer. That's a big enough buffer. And setting forth all the conditions that we set forth today, I make a motion to approve the case.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell?
I'll second it. And I think it's nice to have a business that has such an impact on our, on the local communities, and it's located right here now.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Seconded by Mr. Armada. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Armada?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
I'm gonna also just put one thing in, too, that I did read the letter from Mr. Perry today, and I, I applaud the business that takes care of the neighbors, and I wish you luck. And I'm gonna say yes, too.
Thank you. I'm very proud of it.
Thank you. Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente?
Yes.
Mr. Oroscoe?
Yes.
Chairman Nansen?
Yes, and I, too, wanna give my sentiments, too, and also to your employees. They drive down Bennett Road, very respectful. They don't fly down there. They're very respectful to the neighbors. And two, you know, being on the board for a long time, you know, there's times we grant approvals, and people say they're gonna do things, but they don't. And I, I must applaud you for that, for all you have done there. Because that really was a shamble of a mess there, you know, that y'all took over.
Yes.
Mr. Posh and I went out the previous application when y'all were here before. And he said, "Man, we need to take a bulldozer and just doze it off." But y'all have done a remarkable job out there.
Now, yeah, like I said before, Tom's very proud, not only with the property, but with the trucks. He tries to keep them clean. He gets them decal. You know, he's always after the guys to keep it clean. And he does remind them occasionally, you know, just keep it slow and make that left turn at the end of the driveway.
Yep. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night, guys.
Thank you.
At this time, the board's gonna take a, yes?
Yo, we, we don't often get letters of praise.
Oh, I know.
For, for things, and it, it is kind of unique.
Well, especially from the person that gave the letter of praise.
Well, yeah, he was a very strong objector the first time.
Yes. So, hey, at this time, the board's gonna take a 10-minute break. We'll be back at 20 till 9:00.
The zoning board will now reconvene.
Okay. Everybody ready?
Yes.
Case number BA 17-20. Peter Vitabli.
Vitabli.
Vitabli?
Vitabli, yes.
Vitabli.
These are the new... I took the other one. Yes, I'm sorry.
Bulk variance construction of single-family dwelling with septic system. Application of Peter Vitabli as applicant, and I'm probably gonna say this wrong, and Paul Montesano as owner, seeking bulk variance to approve, approval for construction of a single-family dwelling with associated improvements on lot, not serviced by Central Sewer, on premises known as Block 204, Lot 3, Lot, and Lot 5, 41 Hollywood Avenue. Expiration date, May 29, 2018. Yes, sir?
Okay. Peter Vitabli?
You can...
For everybody in person, check. You've heard the testimony you gave this evening. Be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing else. It depends on what you've got.
I do.
And sir, starting with you, can I have your name for the record again?
Peter Vitabli.
Thank you. And check, please.
Testa Di Lorenzo, D.I.L.O.R.E.N.Z.O.
Very good.
You can sit.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Di Lorenzo, you, you may sit. What will you be testifying as?
Engineering and planning.
Okay. Can you mind giving us your qualifications, please?
Certainly. Um, I, obviously, I've been before this board many times. I am a 1976 graduate of Villanova University. I have a 1983 license in civil engineering in the state of New Jersey. 1984 license in professional planning. A 1987 license in professional land surveying. I have been practicing engineering, surveying, and planning in the state of New Jersey since 1976, licensed since 1983. I appear before boards of this nature about 50 times a year. I've appeared before this plan, this board before, and I've appeared for both uses. And bulk variances here, if you want, I can go a little bit further, Mr. Chairman, but I just didn't want to belabor it.
Thank you, sir.
Is that minimum, minim adequate?
We accept your credentials.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Uh, for the benefit of my client, he asked me to describe the application so that the board can understand what he's looking at. Mr. Montesano lives in, on Block 209, Lot 1. He owns lots 3 and 5, which is the south westerly corner of the intersection of Farmingdale Parkway and Hollywood Avenue. Mr. Vitabli would like to build a single-family home there. The single-family home will be a ranch home, one-story home. He wished to, he wants to, it's for himself. He lives in Howell right now, but he wants to build a, you know, a final home so he can live there and live out his day there. He wants to build a home there. We did the plan. It was very nice conforming to the R3 zone. We were very happy with ourselves until we realized that with the septic system, we have to conform to the ARE1 zoning requirements, because we don't have one acre. So that's what brings us to the board here. We have a 200-by-100 lot, which is a half-acre, more or less, builder's half-acre. Um, we have insufficient front yard setback from Farmingdale Parkway, because in the ARE zone, um, I believe it's 25 feet, but in the, I'm sorry, in the R3 zone, it's 25 feet. In the ARE zone, it's 1, it's 50 feet. Um, and we, we have to have a 40-foot rear setback in the ARE zone. We have 30 and a half feet. Yes, 30 and a half feet. We also have insufficient lot area. Again, we have 20,000 square feet between the two lots, where one acre is required. I wish that they did. I personally did the soil logs on this property. This is a unique piece of property. According to the IMAPs, they're now called GEO web maps from the NJDEP, this is the only lot in the block that flagged wetlands. So I had to go to DEP and get a wetlands investigation of the property, which resulted in a not, applicability letter. There is no wetland on the property. Again, the DEP IMAP, in my opinion, might have been a little bit mistaken. There's wetlands certainly near the property, but not on this property. We did soil logs on August the 1st. We dug 12-foot logs in two locations on the property. Both locations, in neither location do we encounter water. We encountered very deep, well-drained, single-grain sands on the fast side of K4. The K4 sands that we did permeability rate testing on were 18 to 19 inches per hour. Again, this was something I did myself. And I had Inspection Service in North America run the, the permeability rates. The site is fairly flat. It's on a, if the soil map shows that it's 0 to 5%, but it's closer to the 1% range. It drains in a northeasterly direction from the southwestly corner of the property, near the intersection of lots 4 and 1. And it runs in the northeasterly direction to the corner. There's an existing inlet at the property line contiguous between us and Lot Number 4, which is to our south. The drain picks up the stormwater on the roadway. We intend to continue in the existing pattern and run the stormwater toward that drain. We're also, by the time we get finished with plot plan, assuming the board acts favorably, will have recharged wells on the property, because under the current NJDEP requirements, we have to recharge the majority of the stormwater coming from this property. With that said, let's see, again, it's a single-family dwelling. The existing septic, the proposed septic system will be the most extreme northeasterly corner of the property, the furthest from the existing residences on both lots 4 and Lot 1.01. In, in all cases, our septic system is further than the 100 horizontal feet from any septic or wells, I'm sorry, any wells, from about 85 feet from the existing pool on Lot 4, which needs to be 50 feet. And we're, we are, we meet all the setback requirements for all the health codes under Chapter 7 colon 9A, which is the septic code. The site was inspected by the, by Chris Liberto and his assistant, Ben, when we did it back on August the 1st. And they witnessed the soil logs and all the soil testing. And the plans have been submitted to the, to the Health Department. And we still have to get through a few things. We have to get through the plot plan. And we have to go through soil erosion. Although we've done a soil erosion plan, the application fee's about $1,000. So we're waiting to get a decision before we submit it. With that said, I would indicate that that's my direct testimony, that that's a fairly decent description of the property.
On Lot 4, it doesn't depict where the septic is, per Lot 4?
The septic is in the, the well is located to the rear, and the septic has to be 50 horizontal feet from our septic system. Our septic system is 41 feet from the property line. His septic, by law, has to be 10 feet from the property line, so it's gotta be at least 51 feet. So we didn't locate his septic from our septic, because we had, we, we will be in excess of the minimum requirement, regardless of where he put the septic.
Mr. Mallon?
I, I have no objection. He's gonna have to show to the Board of Health and actually locate the structures. So whether he states it, he's correct in how he presents it. However, he'll, when he goes for the Board of Health, they're gonna make him give dimensions. They're gonna have to locate the septic on Lot 4.
Okay.
And a requirement. Obviously, that's septic to septic. And then he has also the requirement of septic to wells. And then he has, in addition, he has the relationship of recharge to wells and septic. So he's got a lot of, a lot of things to comply with. He states he can. It appears he can. I don't know what's across the street on Farmingdale Parkway. That's another thing you have to look at.
There's another one across the street, Mr. Mallon, whose septic is on the other side. So we have adequate room.
Well, we, we don't have jurisdiction, but you, it will be a requirement of your, of the approval that you have to comply with all the Board of Health requirements.
Absolutely. We want to know.
And obviously, if you do not, then you gotta go back to the state.
Yep. Yep.
They're, they're the only ones. So in reality, you, you comply with the R150. The problem is, because you don't have sewer, you have to comply with the ARE1, and that's why you're here for variances.
Correct.
Okay? The, you're, uh, once again, we can't waive fire and utility applications to fees. Those have to be paid. Only, unless you want to go to the governing body, which I haven't seen them ever waive it, so you're, you're gonna have to do that. Um, the, you'll, you'll comply with the, the comments I have on the plot, dealing with the curb sidewalk type, the material. The roads are paved, correct?
Uh, the, actually, the curb is more like a, a misstatement on my part. It's a concrete apron, because there is no curbing on the roadway. So we're gonna continue that, and I'll make sure it's clarified. The concrete sidewalk is our walkway from the, the bituminous driveway to our house, and I will give you detail on that, absolutely.
So you would do a, a, well, because you don't have a detail, or you do for the bituminous, and then you're gonna have concrete apron? What are you gonna have? You're gonna, you're gonna come from the road in? You're gonna do bituminous all the way in?
No, we're gonna come from the road in with concrete, which I believe is the Howell standard.
Okay. Then you have to amend your plan. Because your plan shows, well, it says a concrete apron of the driveway, then you go to a bituminous drive, and then you go back into concrete when you get up near the, the house. So...
I'll amend the plan so it's clearer.
Okay.
But...
Whatever it is, you'll comply with the requirements that the, that the code...
Absolutely.
I don't know if they'd make you put, without curb and sidewalk out there, whether they would make you do concrete apron? I think you just, you could use bituminous.
We saw it in the requirements, so therefore we showed it.
Okay. But you'll have, you'll have to comply with the township requirements.
Yes, sir. Um, I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I, I have a question. What's the size of the dwelling this proposed? No, that's the size of the lot. That's a lot.
It's, it's, it's something less than 3,000 square feet, around 2,400 and change square feet. It looks, it's got a big footprint. It's only a ramp path.
And it's two-story?
No. No.
One-story. 2,400 square feet.
Mm-hmm. It's under 2,400, actually.
Is it going to have a garage?
Yes.
Is that considered in the 2,400 square feet?
Yes, it is.
Is the porch going to be a covered porch or enclosed porch?
Covered.
Covered?
It won't be enclosed, but it'll be covered.
That's going to be in the setback, correct?
Yes, it will. Actually, the covered porch sticks out no further than the most easterly projection of the building.
The building.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
It'll match the R150, but not the ARE1.
R3.
Right. That's due to the septic.
Correct. So if this lot had sewer, they would not be here.
Right.
He complies with the zoning standards in the R3, but because our ordinance requires the, any dwelling that's on septic to be on 40,000 square feet, they have to comply with the ARE1. So that's why they're here, basically.
Correct.
The setback in the R3 is 25 feet. They're 25 feet back.
Right.
The setback in the ARE1 is 50 feet.
Right.
So they don't comply with that, and they don't comply with the rear yard setback either just because of the fact that they have a septic system.
Correct. And you're going from one size to, you know, 20,000 square feet to 40, 48?
Right, 40,000.
Yeah.
43,560 square feet. And it's actually, the lot area in the R3 is 15,000 square feet is, is what's permitted. So it's going from 15,000 square feet to more than four times that as a requirement, and therefore, the setbacks are, you know, what I would expect for an acre lot, but this is a little less than a half acre.
What are the surrounding properties? What sizes are those lots?
They're all, there are 12 lots, there's 12 lot compilations, some are multiple lots like this one, that are within 200 feet of this property, nine of which are occupied. Of the 12 lots contiguous with us, two of them are 40,000 square feet. The other, the other seven are all 20,000 square feet like this lot, and they all have similar setbacks to this lot. They're all 25 to 30 feet from the roadway. I didn't knock on doors or trespass. I used a spotlight that has no reflectors, so we shot the houses from the streets. So I may be up a foot or so, but they were all about 25, 30 feet from the road.
I would say, Mr. Chairman, that this is pretty consistent with what is representative of the neighborhood.
Okay. And I, since there's no sewer to this, then there's no sewer in the neighborhood.
That's correct, sir.
You said the houses?
And technically, we don't have jurisdiction over the septic system.
No, I know.
That's outside of our responsibility, yeah.
But not our ordinance, though.
I, yeah, this has come up a number of times. Probably something Mr. Howard should put on a list of things to look at, and maybe we want to include it in our annual report.
It has been for two years.
Yeah. Because, you know, this has been a consistent issue.
Was a question?
I was, the houses in the area are approximately the same type of houses.
They're one and a half stories. There are ranches, there's some two stories, but they're all about 25 to 30 feet from the setback lines, who are more or less 35 to 40 feet from the edge of pavement. I'm sorry, that was one of Mr. Mallon's comments. The roadway is about 30 feet of pavement on both roads. This is paved both ways, both sides.
Farmingdale Parkway and Hollywood, they're both paved, yes.
That's correct, sir. But the far westerly side of Lot 1.01, our neighbor, is not paved. So if you look at an aerial photograph, it'll look like this.
I know, it's scrubbed. Mr. Mallon, any further questions?
No, no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Beam?
No, sir.
Do you, do you need plan and testimony?
I really don't, only because I think it's consistent with the neighborhood, given the fact that it's in the R3, and there are, the majority of the homes in this area are consistently sized, setback. And I really do think it's a factor of the septic system. So absent the septic system, this would be a conforming application. So I don't think it has a negative impact on the intent and purpose of the zone plan or zoning ordinance. And I don't think it has a negative impact on the surrounding land uses because it's consistent with the surrounding land uses. So I really think, if not for the septic system, they would have been able to just pull a permit.
Okay, so you're going to clarify the concrete apron and also the bituminous asphalt, correct?
Yes, I want to show Mr. Mallon a clearer picture of that, yes.
Okay. Is there going to be any clearing on the site?
About 14,000 square feet of it. You're going to clear, we have a clearing limit on the plan, and we're going to clear everywhere where we're going to be putting up the dwelling or the house. But we're going to be leaving about 15 to 20 feet along the westerly side, and wherever we can along the rear of the property, looks like about 10 to 15 feet. But we're going to clear the 13,000 square feet. We're going to be disturbing for the septic in the house.
Mr. Chairman, one other thing. You'll merge the lots?
Yes.
Okay.
They were presented to the buyer here as one lot.
Any questions to the board?
Yeah, I just, yeah, I just had, I was just curious, what is the proposed topsoil stockpile?
This is also being used as the soil erosion semi-control plan we're submitting to free old soil. They want to know where you're going to store the topsoil while you're building the house because they don't want you to take it away.
Okay, so that's, okay.
That's going to go once we.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Any other questions to the board? Okay, professionals? Can I have a motion to open to public?
Motion?
Motion by Mr. Martin.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Armada. Anyone, all in favor?
Aye.
Call a pause. Anyone in the audience who wish to come forward and ask questions or make a comment to the applicant? Please come forward.
Sir, if you say anything, we just swear you in, and then your testimony will be on the record. I swear that for affirmative testimony you give tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. If you can, sit down if you'd like, sir. And there's a microphone up there.
I'll stand for a minute, okay? I'll stand for a minute.
Your name for the record and your address, please?
Dominic San Gillo.
Yeah, do it in the mic.
32 Hollywood Avenue.
You can sit here.
Okay.
Can you spell your last name, please?
I hope you could hear me well.
Uh, no, we can't. You got to use one of the mics.
Sit down.
That's a mic right there.
Okay.
If the mics don't pick you up, it doesn't go on the recording.
Okay.
And two, we can't hear you.
But you're going to have to speak up right like that.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir, we can hear you now.
I'm sorry. I just had open-heart surgery.
All right, that's no problem.
With five bypasses, so I'm still rehabbing, and my voice hasn't come back yet.
That's fine. Take your time.
I hate to contradict people, but I just want to give you a prelude, and then I want you to, I want to give these out if I may, which gives you the whole picture of everything, which you should be informed about. First of all, most of the houses in that area have been either grandfather-claused or built on meeting all the variances. My house was built in 1974 with my wife, and we accommodated purchasing that land with a variance, knowing we could build. We expect that the township does all of their codes and regulations to protect their residents in the Howell Township area. At least, I would hope so. Okay? First of all, their septic system's going to be less than 40 feet from my well in front of my house. That is not well.
What, where do you live?
32 Hollywood Avenue, right on Hollywood.
So you live on the other side of Hollywood?
I live right behind this land.
Right behind him. Lot 4.
You're Lot 4?
Lot 4, 204, yes. So as I'm saying, it's about less than 40 feet. If that house is built at 24,000 square feet, it's going to leave about 14 feet from my side property line, which is not permissible. I had to leave, I had to leave 40 feet to 50 feet. I had to meet all of the codes and dot all of the i's and do everything proper. Second of all, the land there used to be cranberry box. It has a high-water table. The high-water table doesn't allow the drainage for your leach beds. I've had my drainage for all leach beds done over three times. The corner house of Hollywood and Hemlock across the street has had theirs, from each resident that moved in, redone septic systems because of the water. Okay? With that said, I don't believe that it's proper. The land, Lot 3 and Lot 5, are less than 20,000 square feet. There is no sand all the way down unless you put the sand from your septic, from your leach beds down there. I don't care what anybody says, this is just a fact. And if I may now, I received, my wife and I received this letter eight days ago, saying in the letter, we couldn't get plans for what was going to be built there. Okay, there are, may I give this to? There are six sets.
Need.
The cover letter is here. And if I may, I'll sit down while you have some time.
Yes, sir. Please do. Sit down. Okay? Do you want to give the applicant a copy of that?
Can I just ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
I'm looking at the plans.
Yes.
And I'm not seeing how the septic system is less than 40 feet from your well.
Well, my well is in the front of the house, remember that. It's not behind the house. Our wells back then were in the front of the house, and the septic was behind the house.
So you're talking separation, septic to septic, not septic to well?
No, I'm talking about, if he's planning to put it on the Farmingdale Parkway, Hollywood Avenue, that is right across from where my well is submerged.
So if your well is in the front of your house, and where does your house, does your, your driveway comes out onto Hollywood?
My driveway comes out onto Hemlock.
So it's in front, like on the Hemlock frontage?
No, the front of the house is on Hollywood. The side of the house is on Hemlock.
Okay, so the front door faces Hollywood.
Yes, ma'am.
And so the well is in the front?
Yes, ma'am.
Because, Chuck, you're showing the well not in the front.
If I can, I have some comments, Chuck.
Okay.
I mean, to begin with, we were given the well location from the Health Department. We're 137 feet from that location.
That's why I was asking the question, because I couldn't.
I mean, so I don't know where this well on Hollywood comes from. We went to the governmental agency that has.
Hold on, hold on.
Jurisdiction, and they gave us the location of the well. Now, they're also going to be the ones that are going to be confirming that we're far enough away when we dig the hole. So I'm sure their records are fairly accurate.
This should have been all confirmed before the land was purchased.
With all due respect, they absolutely have the right to make an application for whatever they want on their property.
Yes, ma'am.
But if they're getting the location of the well from the Health Department, we don't have jurisdiction over that. So.
I understand.
Contract, I mean, do you have a plan that shows where your well is?
I have, I have a responsibility to tell you.
I, I agree.
That if your codes are not met by this township that I had to meet, that's improper. You should not flip codes.
But if, do you have a plan that shows where your well is, is I guess the question?
Yes. I know my well, you could, my well is in the front of the house for 44 years.
I understand that, but in order for us to understand.
If you care to come to my house or have somebody from the engineering department come, I will show you exactly where the well is. But 44 years later, later, I cannot remember where that would be. I could tell you approximately how many feet off the front steps it is, but you're talking about 44 years, ma'am.
Okay.
Well, I know where my well is.
I, I understand.
And I know where my septic is.
And I'm not trying to argue with you, I'm just trying to.
Let me, let me explain to you. Mon, we don't have jurisdiction on the locations or the placement of wells or septics. We have none of that. If your well is 40 feet from their septic, guess what? Their septic doesn't go in.
That's right.
And their application, they're not able to build there.
And that's why we're concerned. My wife and I have migrating of sewage water going towards the well.
Sir, I'm just letting you know, we don't have jurisdiction on that.
I hope somebody does.
The Monmouth County Health Department.
Will they check?
Yes, sir, they definitely will.
He has to prove it when he gets his septic system approved.
He'll have to prove, that's what we were talking about just a while ago. Because I was looking at four, where is the septic on Lot 4? I was asking where the septic, we see where the septic is on Lot 3, I believe it is. Or Lot 1.01, we know where that, that one is. But they have to locate all of that. That's part of the requirement.
I understand that, sir. This is my second public meeting. The first one's on that document, and the second one's here. If you read through that document, you'll see why I'm concerned.
I clearly note your concerns, but I just, I want you to understand where us as this board, this is out of our jurisdiction. The wells and the septics are totally out of our jurisdiction. It's up to the applicant to file an application to the Monmouth County Health Department. Hang on. Monmouth County Health Department will require them to have locations of the surrounding properties where their wells and their septics are.
Yes, sir.
If they can't get their septic within the minimal amount of footage between the wells, they can't build that. That's all part of this condition.
I fully understand about the septic, but there are other areas of, the back, that house is going to be 24, 24 to 26 feet wide. It's going to be right on my property line.
30 feet from here.
30 feet from the property line.
30 feet from the rear lot line. It's 30 feet.
Yeah, it's supposed to be 40 feet.
That's because it's, because of the septic system. You're in an R3 zone. R3 zone has a rear yard setback requirement of 30 feet. The only reason that there is enhanced requirement is because there's no sewer. And the really, the reason is, is that the goal is to get a septic system on an acre lot. However, as the chairman had indicated, we don't have jurisdiction over whether a septic system gets approved or not. So while I understand your concerns, the 30-foot setback is consistent with the underlying zoning.
Exactly.
But if I may, aren't codes set there the way they are to be adhered to? Right across the street from Hollywood, the owner of that property, who sold that land, had it there for 44 years and knew he couldn't build on Lot 3 and 5. Because his daughter told me. She built the house across the street. This township said, sorry, you can't build, you have to add to one full acre. And that's what they did. One full acre of land for the house right across the street. And I think that's under codes and I don't believe codes should be broken.
Okay, thank you. We hear, we hear, what do you, do you have any further questions?
No, I don't have any questions. I hope you would take time to read that. I, you could see we're in a public hearing, where I sort of, we were, we were approved for what we recommended by the township people, and now I have a flood on my right corner because no inspector came back to adhere to what was, what was told to the builder before he finished building his house on a paper road and next to my property line. So, it all comes from that to where, what possibilities, there'll be problems. First of all, the drain is in the middle of, the storm drain is in the middle of the block. It doesn't do anything. If you came to my house when it rained, you would have to wear boots to get to the mailbox and a rowboat to get to the mailbox, because the drain and your own inspector told the past engineering firm who was fired because of legal procedures that that wasn't going to work. But the township, which I told, said it would be rectified and nothing happened. So, how do you, how do you live by codes and regulations if they're allowed to flip-flop because somebody wants to do something different and it doesn't matter what the homeowner who's been there says, does, or had to do?
See, sir, what you're telling me as far as the board, what you're telling this board, is basically that's something that you need to take up with the township, not this board. You know, if you're having water issues there, you need to deal with the township on that.
I'm sorry, I thought that the board was representing the township, my mistake.
Sir, we do represent the township, but we, we're here to hear this application before the board. That's what we're here for. But as far as drainage problems and issues like that, a developer or that, that's a township issue. That's something you need to go to the township.
So again, it's a moot point for me because the side of the land that's on Hollywood is higher and sloped towards Hollywood Avenue and any disruption of the land might cause a problem. So, you're sort of telling me I'm between a hard place and a rock and I don't believe I should be.
Well, at this board, what we have to do is look at what they're proposing. They're proposing, and as far as a question to them would be, are you going to maintain all your water, water drainage on your site?
That's a question, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to-
That's a question to you.
The answer is yes. We will comply with the Howell Township plot plan requirements, which include seepage pits to handle the water. And contrary to the comment about it being a cranberry bog, I personally did the soil logs. There was no groundwater encountered at all, none.
That's untrue, just go behind across-
Okay, well, I don't want to get, we have to go-
It's very untrue, I don't know how, where he gets this information.
Sir, I dug the hole, I'm a professional engineer, I do this for a living.
The cranberry bogs were from many years ago before you were alive and I was alive.
Okay, sir, we're getting way off course here.
No, I know, but I'm not going to stand for somebody telling me something that he did, which I know with three leach beds, three empty and dug.
Okay, okay, sir, that's on your property. What's your elevation?
Is there going to be a fence along the property line? Or do we lose our total privacy?
Sir, what's your elevation on your property?
My, my property is lower than that property.
What's the elevation?
I'm sorry, I'm not an engineer, an architect.
That's why I'm saying this.
I'm a layperson. And I'm just working on what I know for 44 years.
I understand that, sir. But we have to go by a licensed professional engineer that did the logs, did the soil borings, they were witness, correct me if I'm wrong, were they witnessed by Monmouth County Health Department?
They were witnessed by Monmouth County Board of Health.
Okay, what was their-
They have a letter.
Letter.
Their opinion was the same as mine, that we had dry holes.
This gentleman here said, he didn't even check to see where my septic system was.
Okay.
Okay, that's fallacy.
Monmouth County Health Department will do that. They have to locate those before they can do anything on this property. That's going to be a condition of approval. If, Monmouth County, if they can't put their septic system in, this project does not move forward. That is part of the conditions.
With all due respect, one last comment.
Yes.
People that sold the land to this fellow here-
Yep.
Went to a public meeting, had the same problems as I've shown in the letter to you on the right side of your house, and they won because the codes weren't met, not for a septic, but for a house being located on that. And nobody's built there for, I don't know, several decades now. And I don't see why there should be exceptions made for not coded, not varianced houses that don't meet all the dimensions, 25.5 feet instead of 30.
Sir, okay, I'm going to repeat this one more time.
I, sir-
No, I am, you, it's your turn to listen.
It's not about septics, it's not about septics.
Listen, they meet all the requirements of the zone. The only thing that makes them have to come back here is an ordinance dealing with the septic. It throws this property into a total different deal. They meet all the requirements. If there was a sewer here, they wouldn't even be here. They would get a permit, build a house.
How do they meet the requirements?
Sir, it's in-
How do they meet the requirements? This gentleman lady says it's supposed to be 40,000 square feet.
Okay, I'm going to stop you right there. So, let me just take a step back. When you make a declaratory statement like codes need to be made, need to be met and no exceptions need to be given, this board, the Board of Adjustment, they only deal with variances. That's their only responsibility. So if no variances were allowed, this board would not be here. So they're here to hear applications and there are statutory requirements under the law on what their, what the applicant's responsibility is to justify relief. They've presented their testimony. I understand where you're coming from, 100%, and I'm not trying to be argumentative, but at the end of the day, if they had a sewer, they wouldn't be here, they would have pulled a permit.
So the dimensions don't matter.
Let me finish. Because the goal of the township with respect to septic systems is 40,000 square feet, there's additional provisions that have been put in place. However, regardless, the septic gets approved by the Board of Health, as does the well. And all these dimensional requirements, septic to septic, septic to well, that's handled by the Board of Ed, as is witnessing the soil logs and-
Health Department.
Board of Health Department.
The Health Department, yes. So at the end of the day, they've done soil logs witnessed by the Health Department, they have to submit all their documentation and get all their ducks in a row with respect to the septic, which is outside of their jurisdiction. But I think what the chairman is trying to express is that the lot is located in an R3 district. If there were sewer here, the R3 requirements for setback in the front yard is 25 feet and they comply with that. The setback in the rear yard is 30 feet and they comply with that. So, they, yes, technically, they are deviating from the ARE1 zoning requirements, which leads all the way back to the septic, and they're asking for deviations from that. The issues that you're representing may very well be an accurate depiction of what's out there, and as the chairman has said multiple times, when they go to the Health Department, if the soils are not as represented, or there's a very high water table, or the, your well is too close, their septic will not get approved. And based upon the size of the property, there's very limited options on where else they could put it, so the project doesn't move forward. But with respect to the statutory requirements for the setbacks, they have the absolute right to make an application. The municipal land use law regulates what they have to put on the record to justify the relief, which they've done. So I understand you're objecting to it, but I'm not, we're not going to get into a debate.
No, I'm not going to get into a debate, ma'am.
So I just want to put that clear for the record.
That's clear.
And then-
I'm not debating their, their chance to have an amelie.
Right.
I'm not debating that.
Okay.
Okay, I'm debating, I'm debating the requirements and what's for my family, my wife, and like the property line on the side that's going to be close to the house. No fence goes up, all privacy shot, whatever. Anybody could go right past there and jump over the fence and into my pool. I mean, that's all I'm asking for.
Okay, do you, do you have a fence around your pool?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Within the requirements that there were.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Do you have a basement under your house?
No, sir, it's a bi-level, first floor and second floor.
You got a concrete spot?
Yes. That was because, I don't want to get into it, a high water table, it's two blocks up above the grave.
Mr. Di Lorenzo, your lot is higher than this gentleman's?
Yes.
Which ways are we going now?
There's a high point between our house and his house and our water drains to be yours.
So that entire lot goes that way and that way?
Yes, sir.
And you're not changing it?
No, sir.
You can't, you're not clearing trees.
I'm going to clear about 13,000 square feet.
I mean, as far as going all the way to his property line, you're not forming a grade at all for what exists.
No, sir. No, sir, I'm not disturbing the grade between the properties.
Okay.
Do you understand that? Where the water goes now is where it's going to continue to go. He's not clearing near your property line, he couldn't chase the water to you. I could, but he's not going to. The grade plan shows that it's going out to the corner. Does that fit with what it's now in your mind?
But they're all pitched in with the, with the pitch of the road and so forth.
And that's the issue that the chairman has encouraged you to go to the township with, because if the road is not graded properly and the water's not getting to the inlet, that's a township engineering issue. And I'm sure Mr. Howard, who's sitting here, who works for the township-
Mr. Howard is our land use-
Will be very happy to relay that information to Mr. Herman, who's responsible for those issues.
Mr. District, with all due respect, ma'am, Mr. Howard, I went-
He's right there.
Oh, who is it?
Mr. Howard's right there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Howard, I did come to the township. The inspector agreed with it. Nobody ever came and did anything. Most of the areas, if you go Farmingdale Park, you'll notice they have storm drains. And on the corner of many of them, they have concrete curbs, where my corner would be at Hollywood and Hemlock. The inspector told them that the road was graded, paved wrong. It's not pitched towards that main drain. And anytime, and the inspectors were welcome, that they wanted to come to the property, they'd see a congregation like two days ago of how there's a river outside and how you, if I step in there, my foot sinks, right, and the mail truck is cutting off more and more of my property line.
I will absolutely bring this to the attention of the engineer for the township. I'm sure the issue's been looked into and I'm sure there's some information behind it that we can take out.
I can almost guarantee you that Mr. Howard will look into it.
I welcome that, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, everyone.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Anyone else from the public wish to make a comment or ask questions? Seeing none, can I have a motion to close public?
Motion to close?
Motion by Ms. San Clemente.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None. Professionals, any further? Board, anything further? You'd like to make a closing statement?
Well, I'm not an attorney, but I'd like to say, I'd like to think that the benefits outweighed the detriments and that this property should be looked upon favorably, subject to the conditions that the township engineer and the Health Department all have their fair say.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Members of the board, this, it's an interesting application because of the sewer, which does change the dimensions. But the fact is, it's just the sewer which is out of our control. Other than that, this does conform. And the characteristics of the area are basically the same. These are small lots, small houses that fit in the area. It's just that the sewer, which is not in our control, and it is part of the application, as it's been said many times here. If the sewer is not approved, this application doesn't go through. But that's out of our jurisdiction. This is an R3. This project does fit in the R3. I make a motion to approve this application.
Okay.
Mr. San Clemente, would you agree that that would be obviously subject to compliance with Board of Health requirements on the distance with the wells and the septic?
Yes.
I think that's an important matter, that would be a condition?
I think he did say that.
Okay.
But I'll clarify and say, yes, this, this application must conform to all regulations with the sewer.
I don't believe that a building permit would be granted unless it did.
I'm putting it on the record.
Correct.
That's all.
Okay, you have a motion by Mr. San Clemente? Do I have a second?
I'll second it, providing it meets all the requirements of the Health Department, including the seepage rate into the, which has to be done by them.
Sorry, sir, we submitted a permeability class rating.
I thought the Health Department had to witness that.
They did, they witnessed it.
Oh, they did?
Yes.
When was that?
August the 1st.
August 1st, 2017?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, you have a motion by Ms. San Clemente, seconded by Mr. Armada. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Armada?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.[1720.25]